Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting, the Cartersville City Council, to order. Before we have our invocation and pledge and get to any official business, I would like to take some executive privilege. Since the last time council met, I've been thanked, and I've been thanked a lot, for service to the city and the decisions, or a decision that I made. They were heartfelt and kind, and I appreciate each person who's reached out to me either in person or an email. It would be easy to simply stay quiet and move along, but as people who know me well know that that's not typically something I do. Decisions that are made by council are not made by one person. They're not made by four people, they're made by seven. It is a system we have here, and I'm thankful for the system that we do have. Each of us up here have our own unique perspectives and life experiences, but there are some things that we all have in common. Our love for the city of Cartersville, the desire to make decisions that are in the best interest of this city, the commitment to thoroughly consider every decision made, and the courage to stand up and serve. I'm proud to serve with everyone on this council. Not all decisions are easy, and many times there is not a right or wrong answer, there are just different conclusions that come from looking at the information that's provided. Our community shouldn't be thankful for one, nor should they be thankful for four, but for the seven who serve selflessly for the best interest of the city of Cartersville, even if on some issues you may differ. There are seven of us up here, but we make our decisions as one. Please stand for invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. We boldly speak to the Creator of the universe. We call you Father, therefore all persons are rightly called brothers and sisters. Put into us the spirit of respect for all whom you have made. Guide us as we need to serve others. Give us your spirit to be in us. Amen.
Please mark me in the pledge.
Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Keaven, the rule, please.
Carrie Hyde, Ward 1, here. Jay Stamp, Ward 2. Louis Tonsmire, Ward 3.
Here.
Lacy McDaniel, Ward 4. Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Taffery, Ward 6.
Here.
Quality, not quantity tonight. How about that? Our first order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from February the 4th. Council, you've had these well in advance of tonight's meeting, and had the opportunity to look them over. If there are any edits to be made, now's the time to note them, if not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We have a couple of public hearings this evening. Mr. Manino, if you'll get us started with Z-16-01.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Both cases on the agenda tonight have been advertised and posted. Appears to be no conflicts of interest, and they have been reviewed in accordance with the standards for exercise of zoning powers. First case is Z-1601. This is a rezoning of a 1.53 acre tract. The property is currently split-zoned. Half of the property is zoned MU, and the other half is zoned RD. This request would actually turn the whole property to the MU zoning district. It's interrelated to the following case, which is a special use for the expansion of the Ford dealership to the north of this property. The south half of this property currently had an existing used car facility on it. The back half was utilized as residential. The home on the back half has since been removed. With that, I did explain during the work session about the used permit and the expansion onto the adjoining property, so I'm not going to go into all that detail on that. With that, Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Manino at this point? Thank you, sir. And at this time, I will open up a public hearing relative to file Z-16-01. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing relative to 16-01, and we will take this up for final consideration at our first meeting, I believe that's March the 3rd.
Mayor, questions? Excuse me.
Okay. I guess we're going to keep talking about it. Go right ahead.
Randy, everything will be zoned the same, from Johnson to Ruby Street, is that correct?
That is correct.
And public institution is to the west, I think, is that...
Yes, that's the old Douglas Street School that's currently used by the county. That's the parcel right here.
You good?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Randy, before you go anywhere, why don't you start us off on SU-16-01.
Thank you again. This particular case, as I'd said, is related to the previous zoning. There's an existing Ford dealership, and that Ford dealership is looking to expand or build a new showroom. The existing showroom will be utilized for service and other things like that. They have actually come through the city. We've reviewed plans for them to remodel the existing building for a showroom, but I guess after reviewing their options, the applicant is looking at, like I said, building a new facility. With that, the special use permit is necessitated by the fact that the existing Ford dealership is in the MU zoning, and the MU is not authorized under the current ordinance. However, it is allowed to continue as a non-conforming use, and to expand a non-conforming use, it does require a special use permit. And I believe, I probably mentioned this before, we've done it a couple of times, I think the last time was for the Kia dealership. This is a little bit different because there is an existing used car facility on a portion of the property that they will be expanding to. With that, Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application.
Okay. Questions for Randy on this item? Thank you, sir. And I'll open up a public hearing relative to SU-16-01. And once again, anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for SU-16-01. And again, we'll take this up for final consideration at our meeting on March the 3rd. Mr. Porter, you've got the next item, please.
Yes, Mayor, Council. For you, grant application with GDOT for the Cartersville-Barto Airport. If the city council approves, the airport authority will receive $509,446 for storm drainage system at the airport, designed to relocate the ASO system out there, taxiway repairs, a localizer, repair reimbursement, and a few other items. The airport authority will match the, do the colloquial match for you, 2070754, and just ask for the city council approval for the mayor and the city clerk to sign all relevant documents.
Pretty straightforward. Any discussion, and if not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Bob, you've got the next few, please, sir.
Good evening. First up, would ask council to approve the mayor to execute all documents to apply for a CDBG grant in the amount of $500,000. The intent for those funds would be to partially fund the first phase of an ATCO water main replacement program. We hope to have that grant. We'll probably be finding out something about it in April. We should have some guidance on that. We won't get final money till then, but we should have a pretty good idea of where we're going with it. Would ask your approval to pursue that money.
I think it's actually a resolution that is approved, right?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone? Anyone?
Motion to approve, resolution.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, please.
Next up, Mission Road Sewer, Phase 3. As you're aware, we're currently in the final design stages of Phase 2 of this project. Because of some shifting in our current budget of projects due to the sinkhole issue, we have a little money that we didn't plan on having because it was allocated to a different project that the sinkhole changed our priority on. So what we'd like to do is use that to go ahead and design Phase 3. It will dovetail nicely with the Phase 2 approach. We can get that done. Now, we can also get probably right up to, we're guessing, we can possibly get this completed through construction in this budget year if we don't hit a snag going forward. So would ask your approval of the proposal from Rint-McDuff for $79,750 to do complete design and construction oversight for that Phase 3 portion.
Okay. Any questions or discussion, and if not, a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue, please, Bob.
Related to ATCO, again, this would be engineering services. We contacted Stevenson &amp; Palmer Engineering. They brought us the grant possibility that we have gone after, and asked them to prepare a full scope services proposal for that project. There are five task orders there that you see detailed, and what it asks for tonight is, in order to apply for the grant, we have to have a preliminary engineering report. That's a part of the application. So would ask that you authorize them to prepare that preliminary engineering report at a cost of $5,000, and task 2 through 5 to be authorized contingent upon receiving the grant funds. The total amount of their package is $86,772.80. So would ask your approval of that.
Any discussion?
Is there a reason why that kind of project wasn't bid out?
It really was done because they approached us with this opportunity, they came in cold calling us, you know, and said, "Look, what kind of work are you guys looking at?" We pulled out our five-year plan and said, you know, "Here are the things on it." They asked if we can come in with a certain level of funding, would you consider letting us do a project? Because what we've been doing is, we have been using, as you notice, we've been using different engineering firms, and we're actually trying to break out of that mold of just using Jacobs for everything. This is, we internally refer to it as our 51st dates with engineering firms.
Why should it state internal?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, we're... Honestly, but that's what we're doing, is we're trying out some of these folks that we know other communities have used and have had good success with, and we're trying to pick projects that play to their strengths, and this project is what played to their strength, and that's how they were selected.
Probably the most important thing, though, is they found the grant.
They brought the grant to us, yes.
Okay. I was just curious.
No, that is why.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, please, Bob.
Last up, we need to buy some six-inch ductile pipe, specifically 1,500 feet. It'll be used for various projects that we will do internally. About 300 feet of that's intended to go into our inventory as we are below stock on this particular item. Took bids, HD Supply was the low bidder at $17,190, and would ask your approval of that purchase.
Any questions on this? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve the low bid from HD Supply.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Don, you've got the next one. Mr. Hostbrook, power quality analyzer.
That's a fact. Good afternoon. Yes, the electric department needs a power quality analyzer to help us determine causes of power quality for large businesses and commercial business, and we've put this analyzer out for bid, and we're asking council to approve the low-cost bid on this instrument, and this is a budgeted item, and the low-cost bid was by Power Monitor Incorporated, $8,407.37.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Mayor, just a question. Tom, what does this really do? I mean, is it giving you, at 11:15 at night, someone's power is...
It looks for harmonic distortions.
There you go. Careful what you ask for.
It...
Okay, well, we have a few hours now.
When things aren't going quite like they seem electrically, this helps us analyze, to analyze and find and determine the problem.
Is it for the client's benefit as well as the city's?
Both. If the client has a problem, we have a problem.
And you can then, if they have a problem and they ask you about it, then you can see what's really happening.
We can see and demonstrate where the problem lies, and, you know, it could be inside with a certain piece of equipment, you know, but it helps, it helps the customer.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, this isn't like power outages. You're talking about some of the tiniest fine-tuning glitches that could affect the equipment inside of a manufacturing plant that can cost them tens of thousands of dollars.
That's correct. So it's also could be used as like a deterrent to bigger problems.
Right.
Thank you, Tom.
Would you like to make a motion? Anybody can.
I'd be glad to make a motion. Make a motion to approve.
I know, it's still a second.
All right. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Tom, before you come up, we do have two items to add. I'd ask council to add those two items.
So need.
And a motion to add. Diane, would you second that?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those items are added. Step forth, you'll take care of the added item, and then I'll ask Mr. Lovell to handle the second added item. Actually, you've got two items.
I've got two.
Do your vehicle purchase one, please, Tom. I'm sorry, check marks got out of line.
Honorable mayor and council, the electric department is in need of a dump truck. The existing truck is 12 years old and basically needs a new engine. After talking to the garage, they strongly recommended us just getting a new vehicle. Bid was placed on the city's website for a two-week period. We received one bid back. Bidders were asked to bid the truck in two ways, one is a four-wheel drive, and one is a two-wheel drive. After talking to the loan dealer, he basically told me that the reason why nobody else bid on it was due to the fact that we specified a gasoline engine, and in order to get a gasoline engine, 2016s were no longer going to be able to be made with a gasoline engine. The only way we could do it would be to get a diesel. We specified a gasoline engine. After discussing with the garage, it was decided that the electric department couldn't wait for a new, basically for the 2017s to come out. Therefore, I recommend the four-wheel drive dump truck be purchased from Wade Ford, and the amount of the $46,281 from Wade Ford is the long bidder.
Okay, is it, it fell within the budget?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for this item?
Would dealers know that items like this would be on our website? They have that knowledge?
Yes. Again, the way it works is, we basically advertise it. Those folks that are interested can go out and register. Every time we advertise a vehicle, they will get an email saying, "We have items out there for bid for vehicles," and then they will go and pull off the information and decide whether they want to bid on it or not.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tom, how close is this to the budget? How close is this to what we budgeted?
The budget, I believe, was around $50,000, so it is a little bit under. Again...
Thank you.
All right. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. If you'll please handle the added item, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Honorable mayor and council, as required by the IRS, they are now requiring us to, well, they're requiring all employers to file the, just lost my train of thought, hold on. The Affordable Care Act has kicked in, and we now have to file additional forms with the IRS, Form Number 1094C and 1095C. These are regarding health insurance coverages for the year. This would be for the year 2015. Currently, the city does not have the capability to furnish the forms to the, in the format that the IRS needs. As a result, the city is contracting with Shaw Hankins to complete the 2015 Affordable Care Act, Forms 1095C and 1094C, reporting requirements. Shaw Hankins will provide the city with a PDF file for the employees, and actually file the forms with the IRS electronically, and this will cost the city about $4,500. This is a contract. City attorney has reviewed the contract, and inform us, we need to bring it to council for vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, is this a yearly cost?
I think it's a...
It will be in the future.
Moving forward.
Yeah, every employer in the country, I don't know, you know, you may have received one with your own health insurance now, but every health insurer or the company will send you a form now every year that says that that company is providing you health insurance, and you have to file that form with your taxes so you don't get those penalties that are, wait, excuse me, they're not penalties now, Supreme Court said they were taxes now. So you don't get those additional taxes.
Prove you're insured.
Yeah, under the Affordable Care Act.
So in other words, we will have to prove on this filing that all of our employees are covered in some way?
Yes. Yes, we have to file, individual employees, individual forms will be given to the individual employees, plus we have to fact, or electronically file forms with IRS.
It's after we prove we're not aliens, too.
Correct.
Okay. Any other snarky comments, or would anybody like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and Mr. Lovell, if you'll handle this other item, and we'll get our financial report in.
Yes, Mayor. Back in 1994, CSX gave to the city of Cartersville a caboose for us to potentially use for an exhibit in downtown Cartersville. However, the city went in different options when they redeveloped the Pedestrian Plaza downtown, and that caboose has been sitting down on a chemical products property all these years. They've been nice enough to store it to us. The new Lake Point development down in Emerson is building a, something called Lake Point Station, that as part of that will have a depot, and they would like to use that caboose as an exhibit. We have requested CSX to authorize us to give that caboose to Lake Point. They have agreed to that and sent us to a writing, and what you have today is a bill of sale before you, and attached that bill of sale is a letter from the Barco County Tax Assessor's Office, whom we had assessed the value of the caboose and determined it was less than $500. Therefore, we do not have to advertise transferring that particular piece of property. Therefore, today I'm recommending that y'all, by motion, surplus this caboose and authorize it to be sold to Lake Point Land LLC for the sum of $10. They will be responsible for the expense of moving it to their facility down there, and will also indemnify the city for any and all future environmental claims or any claims related to the move.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Keith on this item? If not, a motion is in order.
It is. Motion to approve.
Got a motion, and...
Second.
Thank you, a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and we'll have our financial report here in just a second. Where's Richard when you need him?
We got him. Honorable mayor and council, tonight we'll be looking at the financial statement or financial report for December 2015 and comparing it to December 2014. In the general fund, revenues increased over last year by about $9 million. Again, this is due to, and this will be an ongoing issue, I wouldn't say issue, but it'll be ongoing throughout the fiscal year. This is due to the school system paying off bonds. Expenses have also increased by about 8.8 million, again, due to the school bond early payoff. Three years of revenue to monitor on a monthly basis. Local office and sales tax, we have a decrease of about $104,000. Police fines and forfeitures, we have a decrease of about $14,000, and billing permits and inspection fees have an increase of about $52,000. The water and sewer fund, revenues increased over last year by $302,000. Expenses decreased by $242,000. This is due mainly to decreased capital expenses. In the gas fund, revenues decreased over last year by $1.8 million. Expenses decreased by $1.9 million, and this is due mainly to decreased cost of purchase gas. Electric fund, revenues have increased over last year by $693,000. Expenses decreased by $664,000. This is due mainly to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses, coupled with decreased cost of purchase electricity. Stormwater fund, revenues increased over last year by $21,000. Expenses decreased by $40,000. This is due to decreased operating expenses and decreased capital expenses. Solid waste fund, revenues increased over last year by $22,000, and expenses increased by $117,000. This is due to increased operating expenses and increased capital expenses. And finally, in the fiber optic fund, revenues increased over last year by $63,000. Expenses increased by $64,000 due to increased personnel expenses and increased operating expenses.
Questions, Mr. Reinhardt, on the financial report? Anything to add? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Any other business that needs to come forward, council, this evening? Okay. I know you've got some. I do want to, Mr. Anderson, I know that you've got a lot of kudos thrown your way. I want to publicly thank you for the expedited installation of the lights at Richard Bell Field. I went out there for the first baseball game, and the field was showered evenly with light, and it's hard to believe that they existed with the old lights after seeing the new lights. So I know that was, you had to fast-track that and coordinate all that, and I just want to let you know that we appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you, Derek.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Many times, our police department comes before us, and they ask for equipment for their cars or things that are needed at the Department Public Safety Building, and we approve that, and we note that it is DEA funds asset forfeiture. On December the 22nd of last year, that money, $1.4 billion, was taken away from the Department of Justice nationwide. It affects some cities more than others, but we're on 75, we're 43 miles from the Gold Dome in Atlanta, and so taking that money away from us, when we put two officers in Atlanta, really is a hit. It's about a million-dollar hit, some years, not every year. So on the front of the Atlanta Constitution, one day this week, our chief was interviewed and discussed this DEA funds and what it actually means to the city of Atlanta, Fulton County, and surrounding counties. Chief, you did a nice job. The pictures were really good. You represented us well, and I just wanted to bring to the public's attention that this is the bad guys paying for equipment in our cars, and I think it's appropriate, and I appreciate the article and how you represented us.
Well said.
Here he goes.
Two.
Give me a back.
I can't take credit for all the lighting and stuff, you know, of course, council purchased that, but I would also like to thank the city departments, the cars, electric system, Public Works, Water Department, they have helped us tremendously at our projects that are, that are ongoing for Dillinger Park, as well as the field lighting. And then, second of all, we have a moonlight hike this Monday night. Pine Mountain will be meeting at 5:15, departing at 5:30.
Thank you, Greg. Anything else needs to come forward, council, this evening? There is none? Chair Wintane, you got, get that look in your eye.
No, I thought somebody wanted to talk or something.
Two people wanted to talk.
This was the chance, if anybody wanted to get up and talk, I guess that's what I said, "Come on, come on, for once."
I don't think he understood that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I kept looking.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. My name is William Lob. I'm a certified public accountant, and I've been practicing public accounting for over 30 years. I ran for the congressional seat in 2012 in an effort to streamline taxes and educate our youth and bring term limits to our office, to our federal government. I work every day with the Affordable Care Act and the regulations that strangle our small businesses. Recently, we put into office Barry Loudermilk. I like Barry, but Barry's doing something, he's saying something and doing another. He went into office and he said the first thing he was going to do is vote against Speaker of the House being elected into office. The first month in office, he voted for Boehner to be Speaker of the House. We know what happened to Boehner. In December of this year, he approved the spending bill. The spending bill fully funded Planned Parenthood. It fully funded the Syrian refugee resettlement. This is the type of thing that he said he was not going to do, yet he did. We weren't shutting down the government in December when he approved these bills. He went along with the... He went along with the process, and I don't think we should stand around and wait and watch another career politician go in and rubber stamp these things. My name's William Lopp. I would appreciate your vote. I'm very familiar with this area. I live a little bit further south. My sister-in-law has a farm over here in Fairmount. I have another sister that lives in Cloudland. William Lopp, I do some accounting in the area. I'd appreciate your vote, and you're an open mind, but I really need your vote and your support, and thank you for allowing me to chat this evening, Mayor.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Thank you.
Seeing none, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Adjourn.
Not debatable.
Did not get her on, follow that down.
Chief, grab Bob behind you.